One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the council. Debbie, I don't think I have a list of any veterans passing. Oh, I see it. Great. So we've been made aware of the passing of two of Bridgewater veterans, Bridgewater's veterans. Louis J. Sonny Capiello Jr., a Bridgewater, formerly of Brockton, passed away March 5th on 2024 after courageous battle with cancer. Sonny was a United States Army veteran who proudly served his country during the Vietnam War. And second, we have Alan Warren of Bridgewater. He passed away on March 1st, 2024, at the age of 97. Alan was a World War II naval veteran who served on the USS Solomons, who searched for Flight 19, the lost squadron, and was honorably discharged in 1946. I'd ask everybody to please join me for a moment of silence to honor those veterans. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the prior meeting. This is the approval of minutes from February 20th, 2023. I was not present at that meeting, so I will abstain, but I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes.
Oh, sorry. But one more abstention. I was late to the meeting, so I missed a portion, so I will abstain as well.
Great, thank you. Seven in favor. The next item on the agenda is item B, announcements from the president. I have no announcements this evening. Item C, proclamations. We have no proclamations this evening. Item D, citizen open forum. Just maybe a quick preamble on this. Due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to the questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. And I would also ask anyone who wishes to speak to please limit their remarks to three minutes. I will note, we do have a hearing coming up on the new proposed Central Business District and Form-Based Code. That hearing will have an opportunity for residents to speak about that topic at that point in the agenda, which is right after this. So if you do have topics specific to that, we'll have some dedicated time. But I would invite anyone who would like to speak to the town council to approach the microphone. Please state your name, address. Great, here we go.
I don't know how much I can speak. I've got leinontitis. Janet Hansen, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. So as far as the zoning, we can talk about that later. We don't need to talk about it.
You're welcome to say it here, but we are going to have essentially a comment period specifically for that in about five minutes or so.
Okay. Yeah, because there was questions I had. I did email some on that. I also still have the question about us not being able to speak during a committee meeting with something that's on the agenda. Not a closed item, but something on the agenda, because that's the whole point of us attending those committee meetings. And that's something new. We brought it up before, and it happened again right after that last meeting with the ConCon. So I still, and I'm not the only one who's kind of questioning this, we still are confused. I think we should be able to speak to what's on the agenda. That's the whole point. To express our concerns or questions during the time that we're allowed to speak. So I still have those questions. So I guess I will hold my comments for the zoning. I did have quite a few concerns about that. And I guess that will be it for right now.
Thank you. I will say during the town manager's report, he is going to talk to us a little bit about public comment, so we should hear more about that.
Okay, so hopefully that gets resolved. It's very frustrating, because then ends up being dead air when you don't know what else to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Would anyone else in the public like to speak? I do not see anyone. I will close the citizen open forum, and we'll move on to agenda item E, appointments. We have one appointment this evening to the Conservation Commission, Mark Peterson, for the term of 2024 to 2025. I would entertain a motion to approve this appointment.
So move second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Moving on to agenda item F, this is our hearing.
Got to wait three minutes.
Am I running ahead of schedule?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the way that these hearings work is they have a posted time to start. The posted time to start for this one is 7:10.
Two minutes.
Mr. President, let's take item G out of order, if you don't mind.
Great idea.
Second.
A second.
We have a motion to take item G out of order and a second?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. We'll take item G while we wait. Item G is a license transaction, petition P 2024-016.
Go slower.
Change of manager of an alcohol establishment, LFHM LLC, doing business as The Chatterbox. I would entertain a motion to approve this license.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sure.
Yes.
Mr. Dutton, is everything turned in? No issues with this? Are you good with it?
Everything has been turned in, and the appropriate town officials have approved the change of manager for this establishment, and quite content with the application and the feedback from town departments.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on this? Okay. Seeing none, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. All right, we can now return to item F. About 20 seconds.
Bingo.
All right, it is 7:10. Thank you for your patience. We'll now entertain item F. It's a hearing for the proposed zoning amendment ordinance D-FY 24-004, Central Business District and Form-Based Code. The time is 7:10. I will now open the public hearing. And I would start the public hearing by inviting Bob Rulli to make a presentation.
Good evening. I just briefly want to walk through a short presentation, then address some of the concerns, comments with respect to the revised ordinance, if I could. Next slide, please, Michael. So just a recap of what the requirements of the MBTA communities legislation is. We've been over this many times, but just for those in the public that aren't aware of it, it is a requirement of state law that was enacted under the Baker administration, that we have to designate a certain zoning district to, at least on paper, create an increase of housing to address state's housing crisis. And it has to be within a half-mile radius of an MBTA asset. So at the present time, that asset is located on the Bridgewater State College campus. It would be hard to meet the compliance requirements of keeping it there. We've been in discussion with the MBTA and consultants relocating that to the Spring Street lot, which I'll talk about shortly. Next slide, Michael. So if the platform is relocated, this is the half-mile radius from that location. Previously, we've addressed that there are at least five, and actually six, development sites, redevelopment sites within that radius. The Perkins Foundry site has already been before the planning board and approved. The Campus Plaza site, there is activity on the former Friendly site, the technical recycling site on Hale Street, the vacant lot on the corner of Plymouth Street and Hale Street owned by the university. And then the sixth site would be a portion of the Spring Street lot that the MBTA owns. Next slide, please. I think this is important to reiterate. The adoption of the MBTA communities does not require that you build the 1,401 homes that would make us in compliance, just that the zoning allows for it. So I think there's been a lot of misunderstanding that we're adding that many homes. It's very unlikely that we would for a number of reasons, but it is not a requirement of the legislation that the production number be 1,400 homes. Next slide, please. So I want to stop here for a moment. These are water and sewer capital expenses that will be due between now and FY 30. We have a total of $66,748,000 that would be due for water, and an estimated $50 million for the second phase of improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. I bring this up because this is not adding any capacity. This is us meeting our current needs in current DEP regulations. So $116 million between now and FY 30, probably difficult to raise through taxes. Next slide, please. So adoption of the MBTA communities makes the town eligible for a number of different funding sources, monies that could be applied towards the necessary improvements to the water distribution and sanitary sewer wastewater treatment. These are two of the major ones. The next slide. These are all additional fundings that if we were not in compliance, we would not be eligible for. And I want to reiterate, many of these have nothing to do with vision-to-reality or downtown development. Some of them have to do with the preservation of open space and other community benefits that are unrelated to vision-to-reality or downtown development. But just the state has dug their heels in, as we're seeing in Milton, that if you're not in compliance, they've made the decision you're not entitled to these funding sources. Next slide, please. So looking at the six sites that we've identified for potential redevelopment, this is giving you the size of the parcel, the existing assessed value of those parcels, what we anticipate to be the projected future value once development was happening, the existing property taxes that we're getting now, and then the projected future tax revenue, which is pretty significant. The assumptions that I use in this is that this assumes full buildout under what would be allowed under the amended zoning by 2034. The tax rate is calculated using our current tax rate, that's $12.14 per thousand, and there's no adjustment for inflation. So these numbers can conceivably go up, but this additional revenue on an annual basis, coupled with money available from the state, helps us meet those upcoming capital expenditures. And then next slide, please. So looking at what the potential revenue is, if we were to designate this area as a downtown improvement for funding, a DIF district, I've been very conservative of doing this on a 20-year term, only using 70% of the eligible tax revenue that would be available. This is another mechanism for us to offset the expense of this new infrastructure without impacting current taxpayers. So I think it's important that, you know, we look at what we're getting as DIF revenue, but also what is going into the general fund. Now, 70% is super conservative. We would never go to 100%, but you, as the council, could decide whether you wanted to take this up to 80 or 90. And that's what I have with respect to that. So as I said before, now that we're getting close to compliance, unfortunately, our consultants left off a portion of what should have been included in the zoning ordinance with respect to the overlay district. That overlay district is a requirement under state law that we actually designate what is going to be the overlay district. Right now, that district has to be where the current platform is. Recognizing that and anticipating that in the future it would be the CBD, and we've just got comments last night from the Attorney General's Office. It's a two-step process for approval. The Attorney General's Office Municipal Law Unit needs to sign off on the amendment, and then it goes to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So last night late, I got additional comments from the Attorney General's Office that are going to have to be included in the amendment. So in conversation with Mr. Dutton, and I know he shared this with you, President Moore and Councilmember Robinson, what I'm suggesting is we continue tonight's meeting to the March 26th meeting. At next Wednesday's planning board meeting, we summarize what the changes are, why the changes were made. That could be a joint meeting, the CED and the planning board, or we could have a separate meeting with the CED, so that we can come back with the 26th, and everyone has a clear understanding of what the changes were, why the changes were made, and that we're not creating any further confusion. You know, as many of you are aware, this is a moving target with what's happening in Milton and some other communities. We're doing our best to try to move this along. The other reason I would suggest that it's important that we move this along is we cannot apply for any state funding, those 13-plus funding sources, until we're in the queue for compliance. Some of those funding applications need to be filed in April and May. If we miss those deadlines, then we're delayed another year in being able to apply for those. So I'm happy to answer any questions that either you or the public has, but just wanted to give you a sense of where we're at.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation. I'm going to move ahead with the rest of the hearing format. The first item is to ask, are there any general questions from the public? And this is the point where if you do have a question, you can approach the podium. We just ask that you state your name and address, and feel free to ask a question.
Carlton Lynn, Austin Street. Thank you for the presentation. I had a number of questions that are partially answered on this, specifically the section 9.9 that was added, I think improperly to the text that was published. I just found out about it the other day, read it. I can't figure out where it came from, how it got into that document without having come before you first. That's a problem. That may be a...I just don't want the town to be litigated because of some issues that have happened, okay? So you answered the question of when did the town appropriate the changes and why? I accept those. They have not been reviewed, and I hear you're going to send it potentially tonight to the CED and the planning board. That was one of my requests that I was going to make. And the public evaluation plan is clear. I looked down through some of the terminology that's in that document, and none of it's defined. There's a map reference. The map is not included of this overlay district. We don't know what it looks like. I don't know what it looks like. There's another one that says the MBTA commuter overlay district. There's a map here that shows not the center of Spring Street, but the potential for the platform to be right at the corner of Spring and Broad Street. That's poor work. It also does not include, it has in the code, the caption is the railroad track. It's a blue line. Well, the blue line is an angle at that corner. It's not the railroad line. So this is sloppy work, quite frankly. So I would have to ask that that be corrected before these boards see it. That's the frontage type map. The introduction was not updated in the particular document. 9.9 was never included. There's a Scrivener part in there. And I hope the council sends this to the planning board and the CED and continues the hearing. I'm not against the Form-Based Code. I just worry about proper process and the town being open to litigation because of improper process. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to speak? Please.
Yes, Adeline Ellenberg, 76 Aldrich Road in Bridgewater. And I have a few objections. I agree with the thing that we should continue this meeting with the zoning board so we can hear what the details are. Let's not push this through without proper scrutiny. Second thing is, we are entitled to payments in lieu of taxes because of the college and the prison. Now, we're talking about money coming from the grants, but shouldn't we find out the money that would come as payment in lieu of taxes? Maybe that would enable us to lessen the impact, to study the parameters. Instead of six-story high, maybe we're talking three-story high. Okay? So I would like to request, as a citizen, that a Freedom of Information Act be filed by this council, asking the state to document what payments in lieu of taxes we have gotten for the last 10 years. Let's be reasonable. What have we gotten in the last 10 years? So we need to see if that would offset the grants. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Janet Hansen, Pleasant Street. I have a lot of questions. I don't know how much I can get through, but one of them was, where is the train sta...I still don't understand where the train station's actually supposed to be proposed to be moved. From the map that's in the packet, it shows that it's right where Burger King is, and I didn't think it was meant to be moving Burger King. We need to protect the businesses that are already there. We shouldn't be trying to snuff them out, but maybe the map is wrong on the packet, but it looks like it's right where Burger King is. So I need clarification where this train station...who's supposed to be paying? That hasn't come up yet. Who's supposed to be paying for this train station to be moved? And I still don't understand how a state can expect a town to move a train station to comply with what they think is the best if it's in a spot where you can't comply, and then you can't just pick up a train station and move it. So I need clarification exactly. I can't picture it. I also had concerns when I looked at the map. I didn't realize the, what is it, CBDR, was going to be up to where, like Just Desserts are, right where Main Street. I thought that was going to be further down. I didn't realize that section of Broad Street where the Greyhound and Meeking and all that is. I thought it was going to be further down. So I don't agree with it having up that high. And speaking of height, I still couldn't tell by reading this long thing if the height of the buildings is still being considered at six stories, because a lot of us don't want it that high. And I would like to keep the Campus Plaza area. I have a problem with the multiple mixed use in that area. I don't want to be shopping with those residents. You know, we need to have an area that's just shopping and protect the businesses that are there. And I was confused on talking about in the S section about demolition. And I'm like, what do you mean demolition? You know, they're supposed to be able to be protecting that, but who's talking about demolition in the center of town? And I still hope in the common is being protected. So I just don't understand who's going to be paying for this train station, and what is the cost to this town to do all this, changing things? And mixed use will add to the cost of the town, you know, with families and school and traffic. And I just hope that the businesses are protected and not said, well, we want this changed. We want to make this this way, so let's kick you out and do something different. So I just have a lot of concerns, which I can't even get out, because that thing is 100 pages long, so I can't figure. So I hopefully get some clarification, and we don't rush through finalizing things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patrisse, 35, Stone Hill Lane. I'm also on the planning board, so I just have a question in regards to the referral process. So with this new section that's been included, this will be referred to the planning board and the CED. I'm sure we have time to do it next Wednesday, but wouldn't that have to be referred and posted as a public hearing? That's just a question.
I think we need some guidance on that. Yes, it would?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
So it's going back for that purpose.
So just time-wise, you know, Wednesday, we could handle it, but I don't think that if it's a referral back, it's going to be a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have an additional comment. I forgot. May I speak again?
Sure.
I just wanted to say that we want Bridgewater to build quality. Unfortunately, the school down on South Street lost its roof, okay, and the lowest bid was accepted. I would want quality with any development that takes place, and I would recommend we have a Bridgewater clerk of the works who can oversee the state people and make sure the state people don't put in shoddy concrete, or don't put in good beams, or whatever is necessary for good construction. We don't want shoddy stuff. So just a thought, Mr. Gabriel made a lovely little plaza down on Winter Street. Mr. Gabriel would probably be an excellent clerk of the works. Just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to speak? Please.
Jim Candido from 37 Stetson Street. Want to check my license? Just a couple of comments, and they're in no particular order. With all this going on, as a resident, we only get bits and pieces. We never get the whole picture, and we never see maps. We never see what's going on at Friendly's. We never see what's going on down at Campus Plaza. I've sent emails for decades to the selectmen, the councilors. Once in a while, I'll get a response, but that's not the norm. Traffic today is brutal in Bridgewater. It's not going to get any better with what you're talking about here tonight. Not at all. It's going to get worse. Right now, it backs up sometimes almost up to Charlie's Garage or up the hill towards High Street. And when the lights change, they fly. They fly up all the side streets. So if you're talking about the Foundry, you're talking about Campus Plaza, my personal opinion, I put this in writing to several people, Bridgewater Center, Campus Plaza are not destination sites. Mashpee Commons is a destination site. Mansfield Village is a destination site. I've also put in writing, I know this won't happen, but, you know, like Hanson Farm, if that was ever for sale and make it Hanson's Village in the farm across the street, and build a good destination for the town people. You're not going to put it right here in the center. It's class...look at the trucks, the motorcycles, the cars. They fly up the side streets. They fly all over the place, and it can't be handled today. And you're talking about adding this. Trains are now going through the center of town 24 hours a day. And, you know, you'll have to listen to train whistles, the people down at the Foundry, if they're in condos. That's brutal. I've also put in writing to look like the town of Hingham. They're progressive. Bridgewater's not. About putting in a tunnel from down by the window place. Have it underground and come up beyond the college. That would eliminate traffic on Pleasant Street, Broad Street. Imagine that? No lights, and it would be wonderful. It'd be wonderful. Call Musk and get a quote from him. But noise is terrible, and the trains are just getting worse. They fly, and the train whistles, every stop, there's at least four toots, and that's 24 hours a day. I know I'm running out of time, but just a couple more comments. I sent emails about my yard. This will only take a second, sir. I'm in two zones. I've got a small yard, I don't know, 19, 22,000 square feet. And I put this in writing to selectmen and the councilors. Half of it's in CBC, right? And the other half is, I think, industrial A. I have a lot right beside...I have really two lots. I have a lot right beside—I have really two lots. One lot is the same size as all the lodging houses on Stetson Street. So, you're telling me I can change that lot and put in a six-story building there, or condos, or apartments? That's good for—if I sell it to somebody who wants to do it and give me a free apartment as a senior citizen. But I never get responses, and, you know, there's more and more lodging houses, college kids. Downtown's not a destination site. I could talk for another hour, but I think that's it for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay. We're going to move on. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? Don't see any. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition? In addition to comments, I recognize some of these have already been shared with us. Okay. Are there any questions from the town council? Yeah, Council McKinnon?
Not a question, but I do want to remind all of us that we are voices of the people, and it does seem that this is definitely something people want, but the height might be an issue. I would like to make a compromise and make an amendment to strike the six feet to five feet. Five stories, I mean. I've looked in the thing, though, and I can't really see where it even says six feet. It's all over the place, so.
Yeah, just to make sure we're proposing an amendment on, like, the right thing. I'm aware of two places, I think, that exist. The restriction is four stories, and then there are scenarios where you—if you match the criteria, you can put a six-story building behind it. That's my understanding, and so I think there are two pages that reference that. One, just to make sure, Council McKinnon, that reflecting it correctly.
Yeah.
On page 24, at the bottom of the table, it says—it's got building height, four stories with an asterisk, and says, "Up to six stories are permitted for lots over 1,000—160,000 square feet, provided the structure is behind a frontage building"—so, a frontage building is a four-story building—"on Broad Street, Spring Street, or Plymouth Street, and provided that any additional stories are occupied only by residential use." So, I think what you're proposing is change that to up to five.
Yes. Could I ask a point of clarification? If we are going to postpone this, should we be dealing with this issue at the moment?
I think because it's been raised, and I know that it's a topic for discussion—
I've been waiting for us all to be here to do this.
Yeah, it's good. I think let's handle this as a motion, and then we can handle other motions after that, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Just for the second for discussion.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second, and that's one spot. There is another table that has the same language. So, it would be—the motion is to edit it in both places from six to five.
Yes.
And we have discussion.
Can I continue the discussion, though? I'd like to provide some context on what we're actually even looking at in terms of which version of this ordinance. So—
Can you speak up, please?
Oh, sure. Sorry. Yeah, sorry about that.
Thank you. If you can't hear us, please let us know. Appreciate it.
I—so, as—first of all, as one of the co-sponsors and also the chair of the CED committee, I want to give a little context and background to make sure that we're speaking to the right version of this ordinance, first of all. And then I do—I would actually encourage that we talk about some of the key elements and issues around that. So, just for a little bit—bear with me. Just for a little bit of background and context, in January, there was a joint CED committee from the council and the planning board meeting. So, there was discussion around this ordinance. There was some different perspectives. There were some agreements, some disagreements. One of the topics was certainly the six stories. One of the topics was around the technical review committee, which was in the version of the ordinance at the time. Another topic was around density and affordable housing. And so, we had a really good discussion around that. Then, the CED committee had its own meeting, and the planning board had a public hearing. And then we realized we had a lot of different things kind of coming at us. So, in early February, specifically February 6, Mr. Dutton, Mr. Rulie, Mr. Driscoll, and myself just had a separate meeting, just to make sure we were all on the same page and talking the same language, because it's a lot. You know, and particularly me as a citizen who now serves on this council, I didn't understand a lot of terms, and so we just got together to just talk through and make sure we were on the same page. Then, that version of the ordinance went to the council in the 220 meeting. I don't—and I apologize, I was late and missed the important part, but from my understanding from the notes, that it was actually referred to this date, to continue—to have the hearing on this date. So, there was a packet that was published there, and that's what went to advertising on the 21st. So, another version of this ordinance was then updated unbeknownst to the sponsors, which is Mr. Moore and myself, on the 28th. So, there are now—there's now a different version, and the version on the 28th included this additional 9.9 page. So, that's why I'm saying I want to be really careful around—I don't—I would really caution against us making any kind of motions to amend until we know exactly which version of the document we're talking about. So, I would like to propose that we stick with the version from the 220 meeting, because that was never fully discussed. It was all—and you—you know, the councilors that were here rightfully voted to continue this hearing for today, but I believe that we should be discussing the version of the document that was on 220.
We already have a motion in a second, though, so we have to vote.
So, I think just the mechanics of managing the two ideas, which are both, I think, worth discussion. We do have one to reduce the six stories to the five. I believe that's consistent in all versions.
It is.
It's—
Or is it—we're not sure.
I'm not sure.
It is.
Okay.
But it's—so, can you explain which page?
Microphone.
Sorry. Yep.
The only difference between the most recent version, which includes 9.9, is the inclusion of 9.9 and the elimination of the technical review committee, because it was determined that a technical review committee has to be made up of members of the town of Bridgewater. So, 9.9 was the only addition, and then correcting the numbering. So, that is the only significant change from what I gave the clerk on the 28th of February. What was posted through the council secretary unfortunately was incorrect. I wasn't aware of that until late last week. But 9.9, the addition of that is the only change, as well as changing technical review to staff compliance review.
So, that may be the only addition, but what's actually missing is something that we had discussed, that the density bonus, which is related to the six stories, was erroneously placed in the CDS, and it should be in the CDR. So, the way that the ordinance is written today as well, it is no longer in the CDR, and it should be in the CDR.
I agree with that. I often look at it. I didn't—I didn't catch that.
So, that was missed, yeah.
So, that's good. So, I think there are two things for us to discuss tonight. I do think we have to have a discussion to make sure everyone is on the exact same page with what language it is that we're reacting to, and we'll make sure that we kind of do all the right things to make—to put that in front of our residents and also make sure we're reacting to it. And—but maybe if I could, I would like to actually act on the motion that's on the table and then pick this up through a second motion, if that's okay.
That's how we're supposed to do it, isn't it?
Yeah. And then if—for some reason, there's additional edits needed, we'll catch it in that correction cycle.
Could I ask for a roll call on that?
Uh, yeah. We could do a roll call. I don't need to do a motion to approve the—I can just—okay, thank you.
More questions?
Yep. Do we have any other questions on the motion?
Yeah, just for the discussion, yeah. I'm sorry, my voice has left me tonight. But again, I believe we just want to still point out that these six-story buildings are only applying to the larger square footage areas, which would be Campus Plaza on Broad Street and Spring Street Parking Lot. Those would be the only two areas that this would apply, whether we change it to—keep it at six or change it to five. This wouldn't happen anyplace else in town. I just want people to have clarification about that.
Thank you. Mr. President? Yes?
If I may, just with respect to the issue of the sixth-floor limitation, I do believe that that has been consistent throughout any variation, any version, I should say, of the ordinance as it has progressed. In my understanding, it's actually been part of the proposal since day one. And I realize that people in the community are of two minds with respect to that issue. There are people who've reached me in support of the concept as well as in opposition. Councilor Robinson referred to the Committee on Economic Development Committee vote that we had taken, which, as you may know, you may remember, that the committee unanimously urged adoption by the council of the plan inclusive of the sixth-floor limitation. Now, what—what Councilor McKinnon has suggested this evening and brought forward is a motion to amend that to a maximum height of five floors. And I believe he's done that in a genuine spirit of good faith, to try to achieve a certain consensus. I think it's actually a very reasonable proposal. I was fully favorable of the sixth-floor limitation—if I could just speak to that for one second—because we don't know what we don't know. We have no idea what developer may come forward with respect to a proposed plan for this site, exactly what their proposal would contain in terms of, you know, mixed use and on what site, and we really have no way of foretelling that. And I just don't think it's wise for us to foreclose on an opportunity that we don't yet have particulars on, for the same reason we don't talk about hypotheticals in certain instances here. So, I think that that's really what prompted me to wish to be supportive of the sixth-floor limitation. I am willing to amend that, as Brad has moved this evening, to a five-story, because I think perhaps we can arrive at more consensus on that particular point. I think, too, and a point that Councilor Perry has raised, is that there are only two sites in which a sixth—or—in this case, we're speaking about potentially a fifth-floor construction could be—could take place. One, and the most likely site being Campus Plaza, and the second being on the south parking lot that would be—would be used for purposes of accommodating the new MBTA platform, the moved platform. That site, the platform site, that parking lot area, is really very speculative at this point, because that would be under the control of the MBTA, and it's certainly feasible that they would consider entertaining a ground lease for development of a—construction of a building there, because it would certainly enhance revenues to the state. But that is entirely speculative. What's not speculative is, in view of our total concept of the downtown revitalization that it would—as it would impact Campus Plaza, is that the Campus Plaza site of some—I believe it's 16 acres—could accommodate any number of individual structures. And in fact, we know from what's been proposed in this ordinance is that were a building of—in this case, we're speaking about five stories—to be constructed, it could not be constructed with frontage on Broad Street. It would need to be set back behind other structures on the Campus Plaza site. So, in other words, it would—it would be far less imposing—if you consider five floors to be imposing—having been set back, maybe being set back by several hundred feet, depending upon the plan that comes forward. So, for that reason, I don't think it's really as potentially ominous as some people believe it to be. But again, even at this, where—this is speculative. We don't know what a developer is going to come forward and propose. So, that's my main reason for preferring to be open-minded with respect to the—to the height limitation. But thank you.
Thank you, Council Chase. Council Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask through you to Mr. Rulie, I followed the Perkins Foundry plan pretty much, and they made a lot of adjustments, a lot of accommodations, and redesigned everything. In the final rendition, how high is—how high—how many stories were they finally approved for, in the front and in the back?
In the front, three, and then they have four in the back.
Four. Did they ever ask for five or six in any of their renditions?
They didn't ask for five or six, but I will say that under—and they are not under the proposed Form B code. They're under existing zoning. The size of the building now exceeds what is an allowable height under our current zoning ordinance. So, they will have to go to the ZBA for a variance for the height.
But as approved, they've only asked for four stories?
Correct.
Thank you.
Council Lindy?
I'm not sure who to address this to, but I don't know if it's the planning board or the town manager, but what is the planning board's recommendation on height requirements?
It's four fours.
Four? It is four?
Yeah, and maybe if we could get confirmation. My understanding is the version—the version that before the final edits has gone through the planning board.
That's correct.
Okay.
I don't know if I can speak.
He's the planning board chair. Can the—
Can the planning board chair speak?
Jason? If we have a representative from the planning board and we have a question about the planning board, can they speak, or is that not—
I don't think there's a quorum here, so it should be fine, plus we've posted it. But I would say just suspend your rules, because it's a little atypical. So, just take a vote to suspend your rules and allow him to comment.
Okay. And don't feel obligated to vote in favor of that.
I'll make the motion to suspend the rules.
So, we have a motion to suspend in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Please.
One of the recommendations was for four stories on those back buildings, and it was also to reduce the footprint from 25,000 to, I think, 16,000. But—and Council Robinson and Mr. Rulie, I think, are on the same page, but when Council Robinson spoke about the affordability requirement in CBDS—so, in CBDS, you have 18 units per acre as of right. You can go up to 26. If you get that density bonus, you have to have 10% of the bonus as affordable. I think that should stay in that—in that section. I think what Council Robinson was—and I don't want to speak for her, but I think what you—
Mr. President, I'm sorry, but we're talking about the height.
Right.
So, let—I know we suspended our questions, but the question was, what did the planning board recommend for height?
Four stories.
Okay, thank you.
But could I just—
I'm not trying to cut you off, but I think we're going now in a direction that we don't want to in regards to other things.
If I could just clarify what the other question was about height, is that possible?
Is that okay?
It is related to the height.
So, when we talked about height—
Yes.
So, I think what Council Robinson said is it was in the CBDS and it should be in the CBDR. It should be in the CBDS just the way it is, but I think what we talked about—when we talked about height, was we said if you were going to the maximum height, there would be a percentage of the building that would be affordable. So, it shouldn't go from the CBDS to the CBDR. When we talked about—if you went to the six stories, you would have an affordable requirement, but the planning board recommended four.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do I have to reinstate, or are we just—save a reinstate? Great, thank you. Okay, thank you. Council Robinson?
Yeah, can I ask a question through you to Mr. Rulie? So, I promised—
We still have the motion. We still have the motion on the floor. Do we have to move on the motion before we start asking additional questions? I'm just asking.
I think—is it relevant to the six stories?
I have questions, too, but I want to wait until—I think—do we have to move on the motion?
We're in—
Well, are you still in discussion on the motion?
We're in discussion about the motion, I think.
Okay.
As long as you're still in discussion on the motion at hand, you're fine.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you, Council George. So, through you to Mr. Rulie, and I asked this question, as I promised, to a resident who has been paying close attention. So, this is relevant to height, because it also is relevant to how many opportunities in these districts are available to be able to do six stories. In a— In a hypothetical scenario where a developer or a group of developers were to come in and buy up additional parcels of land, is that feasible that it would become another potential area where there could be building to the six-story height?
Feasible, but unlikely, but yeah, I mean, the requirement-
Fair.
-is that you have a minimum of 160,000 square feet, and that you have other buildings in front. So 160,000 square feet is over four acres, so, I mean, could it happen? Yes. Is it likely to happen? No. But to answer your question, there is, if somebody could put an assemblage together that size and meet all the other design requirements, there could be that opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consul George, do you have a question?
I want to wait, do we move on the motion? Because my questions aren't about the motion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So maybe if I could just have a question or sort of make a comment, just for reference, I want to make sure people understand the thinking behind buildings of this height, because I think there was an earlier comment of just sort of like, why are we doing this? Let's make sure we're all on the same page. And so, as it pertains to picking the right height, the idea for downtown revitalization is that you need to have foot traffic in these areas, so that there are people going in and out of the stores, so that the stores are successful, and then they, in turn, fix up the front of the building, the store next to it that was rundown fixes up their building, and you really get people in and out of businesses. It's not a, Bridgewater Center is not a drive-in destination, and today it's not a walk-around destination. So the plan that other towns have had success with is to put a big residential area, redirect it from other parts of the town, into a downtown area, so that the people who live there will walk across the street to the coffee shop, or they'll go to the restaurant, or they'll shop at the corner store. And it makes that real estate really valuable. So it makes those real estate owners invest in that property and keep it up. And you take what is arguably a little bit rundown right now, and you make those properties valuable, so that the people who own them start to fix them up. That's the idea. And so in addition to all of the other things that we've talked about, trying to hit, you know, the MBTA Act, there is this very real need to try to fix what that area has become. And I think for people like me and others that have kind of passion about this, for years, we've seen versions, little point pieces of the plan, like fix the bowling alley, or change the road, or fix this, but no one has ever said, how do we do all that? Like, what is the big picture? How do you take an area that is as big as this circle and fix it? And the answer, we think, is you find a development partner, we tell them what we want built there. This is not us putting more restrictions, this is saying, like, as citizens of Bridgewater, these are the rules you have to play by to build in that area. And if you play by them, we think you're going to help us fix that area. That's the idea behind it. And so for me, when we start playing with heights, we have to just be conscious that every level up or down changes the amount of foot traffic in that area. And that's part of the equation. So if we play with that, we have to be willing to accept the impact of that change elsewhere in the plan. So that said, you know, I drove around the town to say, you know, where do we today have things that are six stories high, or five stories high? College has five-story dorms, so if anyone wants to see what that looks like, you can drive over there today in Bridgewater, we have a bunch of buildings that are that high. If you want to get a sense of what six stories looks like, the church right over here is about the height of a six-story building. So just to give you sort of a frame of reference, and the idea that, you know, the six stories are being built behind other layers, so you're not running into these massive walls as you drive down the street, you're, you know, you sort of see them in layers and they sort of build. And the other rules in the document encourage people to make those look pretty. So these aren't like prisons, these are like very well-designed, very specific requirements on how we want those things to look. That's the idea. All that said, I do also agree that I think six is a little tall for Bridgewater. And I also think five, when you sort of look at the net impact, there is an impact, but I think the trade-off of going from six to five, to, one, just kind of make sure we're all on the same page and get support, but the other is, you know, I think it doesn't, you know, I think it is more Bridgewater to be five than six, especially for a really big building kind of in the heart of our town. So I would argue in favor of five, but I recognize the reason six was proposed, and I think we have to, if you say five, we have to realize that we're trading foot traffic, which will impact the success of businesses in that area. So we just, we have to think through that.
Mr. President, I do have one question through you to the town manager.
Please.
So regardless if this stays six or five, do we have currently fire department apparatus that can serve as six-story or a five-story?
We do.
We do. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments or discussion on the motion to reduce from six to five? Okay, we have a request to do it as a roll call vote. So we will move ahead to a roll call vote. I'll ask our town council clerk to run that.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Abstain.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Abstain.
Mr. Perry? Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
No.
Six in favor, one opposed, two abstained.
Okay. So we can move on from that motion. I think we had also heard a request, potentially to make sure that we can send this through the right cycles, so that everybody is on the same page with the version of the document, and maybe get the opportunity to address some of the Scribner's errors and other things we heard about, just, this has to be clean. This is the vision of what we want for our downtown. We all have to know that we're looking at the same words. So I would maybe entertain a motion-
Yeah. I do have some questions, and I promise not to propose any amendments.
I'll second her motion.
Okay.
Oh, can, should I state it?
Then we'll open it for discussion and-
Yeah.
Yeah. I do move to recommend to CED and Planning for review.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to refer to CED and Planning for correction and review, I would say, just to make sure that-
Yeah.
-all of the edits are in there and we're reviewing and reacting to the right version. So we have a motion, we have a second. I'll open it for discussion.
Are we going to continue this public hearing or create a whole new one? So we have to continue the public hearing as the same motion or a separate motion?
Yeah, no, I think at the end, when you guys finalize this part of it, I think you make a motion to continue the public hearing.
All right.
You may want to pick a date certain, and then if you need to continue it again, so be it. Maybe talk to the town manager about the dates that look good for that, but I think that's how I would do it.
So, Mr. Rollins, for a procedural matter, I just wanted, a lot of people, a lot of concerns, rightfully so.
Well, he needs two weeks for a plan.
I have questions that don't pertain to the motion. We vote on the motions, do I still have the opportunity to ask the questions? Or do I have to ask the questions now before that final vote goes? Because once it's referred, can I still ask the questions pertaining to it?
All right, well, are your questions part of the discussion about moving it to the next committee? I mean-
Maybe.
You can probably parlay a lot of things into that, I would assume.
Okay. If you give me a broad brush-
I think there's a broad brush with that, because I think that there's, it's difficult to say something's not relevant, that's going to go back and have another public hearing, so.
Right, okay. So if you would indulge me, so actually, Attorney Rollins, question on this, if ultimately this comes back and we vote it down, it doesn't pass, do we have to wait two years to revisit it?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make that clear to everyone, that the ultimate goal is that with zoning changes, if they fail, we can't revisit it for two years, and I understand currently there are some ramifications for that as well. Mr. Dutton, does moving the train platform have to happen to satisfy the MBTA community overlay district?
Not according, right now, not according to Department of Housing and Livable Communities.
Do we know how much it's going to cost if we do move it? I've heard everywhere from $7 million to $15 million. Do we have a hard number?
We don't have a hard number, and that hard number won't be available until engineering is done, at least preliminary engineering is done with cost estimates. And I might add that we don't intend to use any town money to fund that. So if that money comes from developer contributions, or the MBTA, excuse me, the MBTA's capital plan, you know, those are options that are out there, we don't intend to use taxpayer money to do that.
Okay. If we don't move the train station, does it jeopardize the success of all of the changes that we are proposing here today?
I don't think so. I think, and again, it's just my opinion, proof is in the pudding, so to speak, but I think President Moore sort of laid out the scenario where adding foot traffic to a community, you know, has some beneficial components, a lot of beneficial components to it, and helps, then in turn, helps the business community to thrive. So the actual move, the physical move of that station, while I think it's important to our long-term future, is not, you know, critically connected to bettering our downtown.
Okay. Next question, and this would be to Attorney Rollins or yourself, if we pass this and the MBTA community's overlay is struck down in court, will we have the ability to go back to the zoning and delete 9.9 if we so choose?
You can always, yeah. Bring legislation to amend.
And there's no wait period, correct?
No, not to amend zoning that was approved.
Okay. And then the last question that came up, and I want to make this clear, so what we're looking at for the zoning is private building. So these would be private developers, building their own building, it would be up to our building codes and things of that nature, so we don't have to worry about a repeat of what we've seen down the street. Just out of curiosity, if the platform were to move, who would be the oversight for that project?
The MBTA would be the oversight.
The MBTA? Okay. Those are all the questions I have.
Great, thank you. Consul George?
Oh, I'm sorry, if I could just add one clarifying point for the benefit of everybody, what you're proposing to send back to CED and Planning Board is the February 20th version as amended tonight, correct?
Correct.
Right. I just want to be clear.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Any additional questions or discussion?
Can I clarify the clarification? So the version from the 20th, not the latest version that's been posted and advertised.
Correct.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Maybe just an additional kind of question slash comment, I do think that there's a lot of misunderstanding around this, and so I hope everybody sees that we are making it every effort we can to just be very open and transparent with the language, so that everybody has the opportunity to react to it. If people feel like that's not the case, I'll be around after, I encourage anyone to come up and talk to me. And this is ultimately the result of many meetings, many sessions on vision to reality, meetings with different committees, and the idea is to create a rulebook that tells people what we want. And so that's what we're voting on. To Consul George's point, the town is not investing in these areas, we are not building a building down there, we are just making sure that people who are interested in that do it in a way that fits into our strategy and plan. That's the idea. And it's not just the buildings, it's figuring out the roads that go to the buildings, it's figuring out the infrastructure that goes to the buildings, and how in the world are we going to pay for it? It's a full system, where we're trying to just put all of the pieces into the puzzle to make Bridgewater successful 10, 15, 20 years from now. Because if we sit here right now and we do what we've always done, which is say, I can't wait for someone to buy the bowling alley and put up another bowling, it's not going to happen. It hasn't happened. And so this really is, and I hope people recognize it, I recognize people have different ideas on how to get to the outcome, but I think this is the one that we think has the best chance of working, you know, the, I hope people recognize that that is the intention of this, is set up Bridgewater for success. I grew up here, I remember what was down there, I used to hang out down there, it was an amazing place, but that was a very different time than it is today. And we have to turn it into something that matches what is successful today, what brings people into a downtown area, what builds communities. And our hope is that this rulebook, you know, kind of answers that. So I would encourage those who are reviewing it to make sure that it, you know, lives up to that high standard and we have everything identified. But I remain excited about this as a rulebook for Bridgewater's future.
Motion to continue this hearing in two weeks?
Yep, I think we still have to act on the referral and then, yep, so in front of us is a motion to refer the version from February 20th-
Yeah.
-to Planning and CED.
Yes.
With the amendments from tonight.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. I would entertain a motion to-
Continue this hearing and meeting in two weeks.
Okay. I would entertain a second, so that would be, continue it to 7:15 on March 26th.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any additional discussion?
Is that enough time?
No.
So maybe some guidance, so-
We can just continue it again.
So if it's not enough time, we would recontinue.
Yeah, you just, you did the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, great, all right. Thank you. So we have a motion to refer to 7:15 on March 26th, or, sorry, continue the hearing.
First or second?
Yep, we have first and second. No additional discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. All right, thank you. Thank you all for the participation.
Sorry, can I ask a question before you close the hearing?
I'm not going to close the hearing.
Oh, yeah, that's all right, it's continued, sorry. Question for Mr. Rollins and Mr. Dutton, so since we are going to refer back to the 220 version of the ordinance, what do we do with this new 9.9 page? Because I did not have it at that time.
Right, so I think what's going to happen, and Michael might be able to touch on this a little bit more, but I think in essence, what's going to happen is, all this documentation, including that, will be submitted to the CED and to the Planning Board, so that they can have a public hearing with the new overlay part of the ordinance.
Okay.
And then, it's appropriate for, when it comes back, for you all to vote to amend it at that time, because it's gone through the public process to get there.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, great. Okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to Agenda Item H. If you remember, we skipped, or we took G out of order. Agenda Item H is presentations, we have no presentations this evening. We'll move on to Agenda Item I, the Town Manager's Report. We have two topics this evening, the first is addressing prior public comment items. Michael's going to answer any questions that were asked at the 220-24 meeting during Citizens' Comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I wanted to sort of lay out, might not be specifically addressing, but I wanted to lay out a little bit about what I intend to put on my update agenda each meeting, and it sort of plays after what, plays off of what Mr. Valdi had suggested last meeting, which was a very good suggestion. I think, you know, there's a disconnect, sometimes people will ask questions in this body, and they won't get, they won't get answers, obviously, because the council can't really engage in that conversation and that back and forth, because of the open meeting law restrictions. So we need a mechanism that doesn't violate that open meeting law. So in future meetings, what I'll do is I'll list the items that came up in this, in, like, for instance, tonight, if there were questions, I would put those on the agenda for the 26, to the extent that I can answer those. You know, sometimes they're rhetorical questions, sometimes they're political questions, I can't answer those, but, you know, hey, when are you going to fix the pothole on Pleasant Street? I can try to answer those. So that's my intent moving forward, I think that'll help, you know, be able to refer back and give answers to some of the questions that come to this forum. I do want to remind folks that at any time, you can reach out to my office, you can reach out to counselors via email, and some counselors have, you know, coffee periods or a session where you can sit down with a counselor. I encourage citizens to do that, either with counselors or with me. If you have a question that, you know, doesn't rise to the level of having to come to a council meeting and ask a question, we're happy to answer simple questions. The website- The website also, and we're working, admittedly working out some technological kinks, but there's a "Report It" tab. So if you have something, again, the pothole is a good example because lord knows we've got plenty of potholes. If you see a pothole that needs addressing by the town, you can hit "Report It." You can, you know, sort of geomap it so that we know exactly where it is. If you record your name and your email address, then you can get email responses as to the progress of the repair on that. But that's another mechanism to try to get either an answer or come to some resolution on an outstanding issue. So I just want to sort of let the council know that's my intent. Just put a piece, a little reminder on my update, just questions, answering questions from the last meeting. I think that'll go a long way to trying to help us get a little more responsive within the constraints of the open-meeting law and conflict of interest and all of that. So I think that's a good way to do it. So to that end, last meeting, there was a comment about having to make changes to the admin code to accommodate the open-meeting law because there's some conflict between what the admin code says and what the open-meeting law demands, at least the open-meeting law according to our town attorney. No jab intended. So the changes, I've got a whole host of changes to the admin code. I will present those, at this point, I'll present those to the new council that will convene in first meeting in May because it doesn't make sense to try to hash all that out between now and the election. So I would anticipate those coming. Again, we'll make changes to the admin code. I will also probably suggest changes to the council rules and procedures that spells out exactly, you know, when and how public comment is appropriately made because I don't want anybody to feel like they can't comment on something that is in front of the town, whether it's on the council level or board and committee level. I want to make sure people understand that they have the opportunity to be heard. So those changes will be forthcoming, or at least proposed changes, I'll present to the council soon after the April election. So I just wanted to sort of clarify some of that.
Thank you. Counselor Lindy?
Through you to the town manager. Is there any possibility we could also get assistance from the AG's office in terms of, I know when I was in Brockton, they had all the chairs of all the committees meet with, and they did a whole seminar for us on the open-meeting law and on citizen complaint. Is it possible that maybe rules and procedures before the council has, like, an education? Especially with three
Absolutely. So, and that sort of strays off a little bit, but absolutely. So we're planning for, right now, for sort of an all-new council orientation session. I think there are enough, certainly will be new people come May, the first May meeting, and there are a lot of newer counselors, yourself included. So we want to make sure that everybody gets a really good orientation, understands very clearly what they can do, what they can't do, and then, you know, make sure you're fully armed to go out and, you know, be an exceptional counselor. So, yeah.
Never get enough training on the school committee level. We had eight hours a year required through MASC. I wish we had a requirement like that with MMA or somebody.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions for the town manager on that? It sounds like a great way to make sure there's a consistent feedback loop to anyone who approaches. And clarification on why we can't respond, I think is great. I don't see any other questions. Maybe we can move on to Agenda Item B, Veterans Agent District Update. This was requested by Counselor Gallagher.
Thank you for that. And I do, I will preface what I say by saying, I think there's been a lot of confusion and misunderstanding about what we are actually trying to do. First and foremost, we're trying to make veteran services exponentially better and more responsive to vets, as well as spouses and families of vets. That is primary number-one goal here. And I will tell you that we have, just sort of as an aside, we've interviewed two, so far, two extremely good candidates for the VSO officer for the district. And just in terms of process, my intent is to hire the VSO first, let that person get their feet on the ground for a few months, understand what the work is really going to be as part of this district, and then assess, have that person be able to assess what kind of additional help they're going to need within the district. And at that point, then go out and hire what I believe will be a part-time position. If there's just an overwhelming amount of work to be done that's sort of pent up over the years, then we may look at another full-time position. But right now, we're looking at a part-time position. And, but I want to be clear, we're not hiring the part-time position during this round. We want to hire the VSO officer, let that person really understand what the work is, what their capabilities are, and then figure out where the gaps are, and then be able to go out and interview for what I think will be a part-time VSO officer to fill sort of those gaps. We definitely want the district to be poised for success, and that's the whole point of this. And very, again, I'm very excited about the quality of candidates that we've been able to recruit that know that we're forming a district. I got a question yesterday, good question, about, you know, where will the person, excuse me, where will the person be located? There will be a presence in both towns. There'll be an office in Rainham, and there'll be an office in Bridgewater, which is actually required by regulation. So that's what we intend to do. We will, at least initially, because there'll be one admin, one full-time VSO, veteran service officer, that person will be splitting their time between both towns. And, anyway. So that's kind of where we are right now. And just to reiterate why I think the district is helpful to us, it allows us to provide a better salary, draw a better pool of candidates, provide a better, more robust service to veterans and the veterans community, and create redundancies, make sure that we create redundancies and sort of back up in the event that either the VSO or the admin assistant or the, or part-time VSO is not available. So that's kind of where we stand, but happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Counsel Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know, Michael, I know we spoke a little bit before the meeting, but when you say the full-time VSO officer will assess the needs and address the need for a part-time position, when you say "assess," it's possible they could say, there isn't enough work for a part-time, but aren't we required to have a part-time based on the district at some point? I understand we should let the person get settled in, get a lay of the land, and then maybe they do their own interviews for a part-time. But what if they, I mean, you use the word "assess" like, well, maybe he or she will say, oh, we don't need a part-time one. I can handle all of this.
So I can tell you, I'm pretty confident, based on the model, the type of outreach we want to be doing, the type of veteran service that we want to offer, I don't think that's going to be the case, first of all. What I mean by "assess" is assess the need, you know, assess what is going to most complement the existing veteran service officer. So, you know, we do this all the time, you know, on the town level. If we're going to hire a director and there's an assistant director vacancy, we don't want to hire the assistant first and then a director. We also don't want to hire both together. We want to hire a director who can then get a really good sense of the work that's in front of them, can assess what their own strengths are, can assess what would be most beneficial in that assistant director position. So that's kind of the same model we're using.
Right. Because as we discussed, I think outreach is very, very important. I think that's been lacking for years. I think outreach is very important. The housing of the agent, you say there'll be an office in this building for the agent?
There'll be an office in this building and an office in the Rainham Town Hall.
And their time will be split between the two towns, or how will that be managed?
Right now, the time will be split between the two towns. I think as we bring on the additional help, it'll allow for more, slightly more permanent presence in the respective towns. My feeling is that I want to make sure that, to the extent they're servicing Bridgewater veterans, and I'm sort of going outside, you know, the, sort of the concept I'm trying to create here, but, you know, to the extent they're on the Bridgewater side, I don't want them chained to a desk. I want them to be able to know that they can go out to veterans groups, they can, you know, sometimes veterans agents have to make house calls because you've got homebound vets that need services, or spouses, or families that need services that can't, you know, necessarily come into a public building. So I want to make sure that we're as flexible as possible on the Bridgewater side, and I think Rainham will be close behind in that same kind of philosophy.
And although I haven't seen yet the detail of the FY25 budget, I've seen the one-line item, I'm assuming the budget, the veterans' agent budget will reflect these changes for the regional district?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Well, I hope it works. I won't be on the council to look at it, but I'll be certainly around. So I still think we'd be better off with our own veterans' agent, in my opinion, but I think we should, if we're going to give this a shot, I'm not objecting to that.
Counselor Lindy?
Thank you. Through you to the town manager. Have I misunderstood the law from the state in terms of staffing? It's my understanding that it's a full-time veterans' agent and a second full-time person. So the whole thing about the part-time person, the way I've read it, looks like we're supposed to have two, and we have two towns.
So that's a good question. Let me tell you what Veteran Services said to me and where I think a lot of confusion has come. According to Veteran Services, according to the regulations, you need to have certain staffing for certain populations. So the district itself, I can't remember that the exact number is, but you take Bridgewater's population, Rainham's population, add them together, you've got a number. According to the Veteran Services regulations, that requires, I believe, and I, well, I believe it requires full-time VSO, full-time staff person, administrative assistant, and then a part-time veteran services officer. What Veteran Services told us was that we're probably fine with a veteran service officer and an administrative staff. So that is, we, I think, I know I said that at one point. So I didn't mean to say that that's all we were going to do. I was just relaying what Veteran Services had told me. So what they consider fine, adequate, and what I think the model we're trying to create here in a town that's got a much higher population of veterans than average is something completely different. I think what we want to do is create a full-service, you know, responsive, engaged veteran services office, and so that's our effort.
Counsel Robinson?
I have one question and then a general comment for the council. So to Mr. Dutton, I apologize if you've actually explained this before, but do you have a sense of how many inquiries or cases or requests both towns, since it's going to be a district that both towns actually are pacing at today, whether it's annual or quarterly, whatever?
So we, I can tell you how many Chapter 115 cases we have. We've got, in Bridgewater, I believe we have 12. I'm sorry. Yeah, I believe we currently have 12. I think Rainham has 15. But as, I was quickly reminded by some of our veterans, that's just a tiny little piece of the total pie. So we've got roughly similarly proportioned number of vets in our community. I believe we're, oh, man. I know Rainham's around the 700 vets in their community, and we have, I want to say 1,700, but it doesn't sound right, 1,400, well, I mean, so we've got, we have, as I say, a higher proportion of veterans in our community than the average statewide. So I think it's sort of incumbent on us to recognize that and provide a service. And when I say "provide a service," I mean, it goes much further than filling out applications for 115 and recertifying folks every six months. It's an engagement that Counselor Gallagher talked about. It's a coordination with BSU has a veteran service office that deals more with education. But you know what? When you're dealing with veterans' families, you know, that might be a really good connection to foster, and we just haven't done that. So I think there's a lot of work to do and a lot of outreach to do and a lot of communication to do with our veterans that just hasn't happened. So that's our, that's the attempt, at least.
Okay. So I just wanted to just make one comment. Thank you for your patience in explaining this information to us. I, while I, you know, we are all entitled to explore about different operational things in town, I would also like to remind us, it's like, this is, this is an administrative function and a decision that's been made. And before anyone comes at me, this is not about the veteran, being against veterans. My father's a veteran, so it's not that. I'm just wanting to remind us that we're a policy and legislative body. So I think that Mr. Dutton's done a really good job of informing us and entertaining questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Murphy?
I just have a few questions through you to the town manager. Mr. Dutton, you mentioned three kind of big differences of why districting sort of is beneficial for the town of Bridgewater. You mentioned salary, quality of candidate, and then the service to the veterans. Could you expand a little bit further on those three and talk a little bit about, you know, what is the difference between having just a Bridgewater veteran and a district in those particular areas?
That's a good question. So I think one of the things that we've found in most recent history is that there, while some of our neighboring towns have relatively longtime, long-serving VSOs, many of them don't. Many of them have found that, you know, they hire a VSO, the VSO gets a little bit of experience, and then goes off to a higher-paying job or a bigger city or a district. That's, we don't want to invite that because I don't think that provides a great, sustainable and supportive service to the veterans. So when we had some initial conversations with Rainham, that was our key, our key discussion was like, you know, can we use this to build a better service than both of our towns have now? Rainham's VSO left precisely to get, you know, looking for more money and a better opportunity in another place. So the district, we saw the district as the opportunity for us to essentially split the cost. It helps, you know, budget-wise, quite frankly, that's not the driving factor for us, but it does help budget-wise, and you'll see why when the budget comes. But I think in terms of the district, if you can provide a better opportunity for a candidate, you're going to get better candidates. And so we've already seen that. I can tell, just based on the two candidates that, interviews I've sat in on, we've got really some pretty exceptional candidates, I think. I think we can, you know, when you've got, when you've got more, you know, more staffing or more power, you can provide a better service. And I sort of touched on that before, you're creating redundancies. You are, you are, you know, you're hiring somebody who's, who is great, might be a great person for outreach, might not be the detailed person that you need for, you know, doing Chapter 115 benefits. So, you know, if we can, if we can create a district and we can provide, you know, additional staffing that sort of covers all the areas that we need to cover, I think ultimately, we're offering a better service to the veterans. So that, does that answer, come close to answering?
Yeah, yeah, that, close. Another question through you to the town manager. Although not a requirement, obviously, due to the administration functions, has the town gathered any feedback from current veterans in Bridgewater? And if so, how did that work out?
We have, and I think, I think in fairness, I alluded to it earlier, I think there's been a lot of misunderstanding about what our been a lot of misunderstanding about what our intent is, and so, most, all of the comments that I've gotten from veterans sort of touch on that, you know, and once I explained it to them, I think, I think there was sort of a level of relief, like, oh, this isn't, you know, this isn't, you know, trying to, trying to, you know, continue what we're doing, or trying to, you know, cut corners, or what have you. And so, my sense is, and it's just my sense, and I don't talk to everybody, everybody doesn't necessarily talk to me, but my sense is that once that, once we were able to clarify some of that confusion, we were, we were in a good place.
Two more, sorry, I'll be quick. On the part-time position, if and when that does come to fruition, because it's a district now, is that a requirement that Rainham will have to vote on that part-time position to approve?
That's a good question. We're, so, put it this way, we're prepared, if that part-time position, if it turns out that that is really, you know, mostly Bridgewater-centric, and we need that to provide the level of service we want, we are prepared to separately fund that piece of the district.
Right?
Right now, I'm sorry, right now, the agreement says it's a 50-50 split. We have, you know, upwards of 30,000 residents, Rainham has something quite substantially less. So, we recognize that, that at least, certainly, I think, in the first year, we're going to have a lot of additional work to do. So, we're prepared to fund that separately, or as an addition to the district funding.
And then, if that were the case, sorry, another question, would that person solely serve Bridgewater if they were being funded, or would it still be part of that district?
So, again, my, and I said this a few weeks ago, but I think the point of funding a district is to treat it as a district. But I think, to the extent that we separately fund the part-time, we would do an amendment to the agreement, and recognize that, you know, we are this big, Rainham is this big, and we'll proportionately fund our share.
My last question is, you mentioned the interview, that there was an interview process happening. Can you give an estimate on when you would expect somebody to be in that role?
I would expect us to make an offer before the end of this week, and then, obviously, then it's a timetable of when the person can extricate themselves from an existing job and take this job.
So, if all goes well, sometime likely in April, maybe is a good timeframe?
Yes.
Counselor George?
Yeah, I have some other question.
No one can understand what you're saying, anyway. All right, through you, two questions, through you to the town manager. So, I'm a little confused. You stated that for the district, the requirement is full-time VSO, administrative, full-time administrative, and a part-time VSO. That's, that's a requirement for the district. How does Veteran Services tell you that you don't have to follow the requirement?
I don't know.
So, it's, it's probably safe to say that if push comes to shove, we're in violation of the requirement, regardless of what Veteran Services says, we're probably better and behooved to follow the requirement, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. That's, I just want, because I appreciate what they're saying, but now they're talking and saying things that, at the end of the day, we could suffer for, and our veterans could suffer for. So, I just want to make that. Question through the President to Attorney Rollins, I'm going to make you earn your dollar for the night, by the way, tonight. So, here's my question procedurally on the charter. So, obviously, the charter states that all employees of the town of Bridgewater report to the town manager, except for the town clerk who's elected, okay? Now, we're talking about a position that is technically a Rainham employee and a Bridgewater employee. So, could we require that all of the candidates that the town manager recommends comes in front of the council for approval? Does that violate the charter?
Yes. In fact, I think a lot of the discussion tonight, centering around employment of anyone, is bordering on violation of the charter. The town manager has full authority without any council involvement to employ, to direct the work of the employees. It's very specific in the charter. So, the council has no purview over any employee except for the town manager.
So, does the town of Rainham have any authority over that employee, or is it strictly the town manager?
Well, the town of Rainham's going to act with that authority however their charter and their Board of Selectmen decide, but that doesn't impact how we act in relation to that employee. So, it could be a situation where that could get sticky, right? Where, and I think that's what you're alluding to, where maybe our town manager wants to hire someone, and they don't, right? That could, that could be an issue.
Well, the town manager wants to hire someone that we don't want him to hire.
Well, you don't have authority.
And, but that begs the question of, this is a, what we'll say, an employee of both towns, I don't know, and again, I'm not a lawyer, but would it be an argument to say that that particular position would have to come in front of the council for ratification?
Not based, not based on what our charter says, no. Now, could there be a mass general law that relates to these districts? There very well could be. Admittedly, I haven't researched that, because it hasn't come up yet, but it may, it may come up, and we may have to look into it, and there may be some district rules that have to be followed, in the same way that a regional school district has, kind of, a little bit different rules than the normal rules that we follow. But if you're asking me strictly based on the charter, the town council never has purview over any employment matters under the charter, it's always the town manager.
Of a full-time town, of a town employee?
Yes.
It's never, I mean, I could argue that it's only a half-employee, does that still cut?
It's still an, I mean, it's still an employee. You don't have purview over part-time employees, they're, I guess they're technically a half-employee, but...
What's a half-employee? Shared employee, okay.
Let's not start cutting people in half, but...
Just a question I was asked, I didn't really...
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think, maybe two final comments, if there are any. I think it would be good to get an understanding of what role, if any, the council plays in district agreements. So, the creation of a district, you know, management of staff in a district, I think, for a future meeting, that would be good to know.
Typically, so, so you know, just so I can, the only analogy I have really is, is the regional school district, which has its own district, right? And they have their own governance, they have their own ability. But, but in any other context, where there is not a statute that's contrary to what our charter is, our charter always governs.
Yeah.
It could come that, that could create a sticky situation. I suspect, because these things exist in a lot of different towns, there's, there's some sort of district agreement that has to be signed. If that district agreement only relates to employment, and there is not a mass general law that requires your body politic, meaning the council, to sign off on that employment agreement, then it's within the purview of the town manager.
Yeah.
If there is some specificity that says, hey, listen, the town council or selectmen have to be the ones signing off, it can't be, you know, your town manager, then that's what will follow as well. But I suspect there's something like that.
Okay. I think just to make sure that we have everything buttoned up, and we're doing things the right way, it would be good to just know. And then the last thing, maybe, for the town manager, just as we start getting to the funding of this, you know, if we can just, you can just help us sort of understand at that time, you know, kind of how we're planning budget for these different scenarios, that would be helpful. But we don't, I don't need that tonight. Yep, Counselor McKinnon, or did you?
He can go first, I've got my list.
Counselor Lindy?
What our town attorney said of our regional agreements is 100% correct. So, being on a regional school committee, superintendent, all personnel decisions, with the exception of the district treasurer, which the school committee, the attorney for the school committee, the school psychologist, and that's, that's it. We had no authority whatsoever on that. And probably BR and their regional agreement probably has something similar.
It's good. I think the creation of the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District was actually something signed off on and negotiated by this council. That's the only thing I'm just saying, is if there's an equivalent thing, just to make sure we've got paperwork done.
Makes sense.
I support the idea. I think we can do better with more resources, but Counselor McKinnon?
Through you to the town manager for next town manager's update. Fire station, we had the abudders meeting happen. I did see the conservation committee approved it, but I didn't watch a planning board meeting from last week yet, so I can update on all that. And let me open up the realist here. Since we're on fire, two fire hydrants in town have me concerned. One of them's right in front of the town hall, that's out of service. And then, Christmas Eve, Old Pleasant Street, fire hydrant went down there, too, and that's been almost three months without any replacement or anything, and it's not really a good look. God forbid a house in that area catches, so just, I mean, we can fix water pipes, I don't know why we couldn't fix fire hydrants during that time. Stiles and Hart, update on that would be nice. And then, the Summer Street path, which is also, I forget what it's exactly called, but the State Farm Trail, I believe, is what it was labeled. And then, one thing from last meeting that I requested wasn't here, and that was municipality parking. I noticed we put up new signs and all that, but it hasn't been paved forever. I mean, I asked for how much we make, and tickets and all that off that, that'd be good to know. And I was told by two former counselors who are not in this room, that when you guys voted on making that municipal parking, you guys also voted on paving it, or that was involved in that. And that's, this is going to be my one time saying my favorite statement, it's been like that since I was in high school, and, I mean, I could dig back and look in here if that's in there, but people told me that voted on it, that paving was included in there, and that parking lot is, it's, it's a disaster, is the best way to put it, especially closer to CBS. And that'll be it for me, I believe. Thank you. Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Those are good.
Any other, yeah, Counselor Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could please, through you to the town manager, if you, Mr. Dutton, could, at our next meeting, comment on the status of the rehabilitation of Flag Street. In particular, the reason I've raised that now is that I've received word from a resident of Winter Street, the eastern portion of Winter Street, which, as you know, it's very, relatively short stretch of road, but it's in itself rather bad condition. It's also something of a hazard by virtue of the fact that it has no sidewalks, and there's a sharp turn in the road as it approaches Conan Street. And the reason that the resident has brought this to my attention is that, due to the detour, keeping heavy truck traffic off of Flag Street, many trucks are utilizing Winter Street, and apparently proceeding at rather alarming speed, given those limitations that the road condition presents. So, concerns have been expressed from the standpoint of safety in respect of that status. So, it would be helpful if we could have some idea as to, and I should say, I believe I'm correct, that the proper detour does not include Winter Street. It's off of Summer Street, if I believe. But again, apparently, some truckers are using Winter Street, and ironically enough, that brings them onto Flag Street by way of Conan at exactly the wrong spot, because that's precisely where, on three occasions, I think, we've had to, on an emergency basis, do road repair. So, it's, it's completely counterintuitive, absolutely running against everything that we need to be mindful of with respect to that. And I think that ultimately, the real question the resident has asked me is, for how long would a detour be in effect? And that question is really best answered by asking the other question, when will road construction be undertaken? I appreciate it.
Counselor McKinnon?
Always forget something. Mr. Chase just reminded me, when we're talking about Flag Street, the tip funding, an update on all that. And then, since you brought up Winter Street, too, we've talked about this a few times, and we have the money sitting waiting. I'd just like an update on that, when we plan on doing that, because that Groundhog was right, and it seems like spring's going to be here earlier than later, so as fast as we can get that road done.
Just jinxed us. Just jinxed us.
Any other questions?
I'll take the snow, I'll plow. It's good for business.
All right. I, I'll add mine as well, if we're talking about roadways. There is this strange scenario at the end of Vernon, as it goes into Middleborough, there's a bridge there. And years ago, a car ran into the pole that marks the difference between Bridgewater and Middleborough, and knocked it out. So, if you walk across that bridge, there really isn't any guard between the sidewalk and the river. And I believe there's maybe a debate over who needs to fix this pole, because it's literally the pole that delineates the difference between our towns. So, maybe if we could just get an update on that request. I know the people in that neighborhood often walk there, and kids kind of play around there, so there's, there's just been a request to know, it might not even be our thing, it might be Middleborough, but if maybe there's just an update on it, that would be helpful. Okay. Anything else? So, we have 52 things, I think, for next time. Thank you. All right. We, we are going to move on, then, to J, discussions. We have none. Committee reports, would any committees care to comment? I see none. Legislation for action, we have none tonight. M, old business, we have none. N, new business, we have quite a few. So, what I might do is we'll move through these and entertain a motion to refer to budget and finance, but if somebody does want to pause for discussion, please just call it out. The first one is A, Order O, FY24-027, FY25 water and sewer rates. These are the kind of fraction of ascent increases in rates. I would entertain a motion to refer to budget and finance in Finance Committee.
So, move the second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. The second, Order O, FY24-028, it's the acceptance of a grant from the Council on Aging, Mass Cultural Council, for $2,500. I would entertain a motion to refer to budget and finance in Finance Committee.
So, move the second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. The next item, Item C, Order O, FY24-029, acceptance of grant, Community Transit Program, Mass DOT, in the amount of $288,000. I would entertain a motion to refer to budget and finance in Finance Committee.
So, move the second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. The next is Order O, FY, oh, sorry, OF24-030, acceptance of grant, Police Department, Justice Assistance Program, JAG, in the amount of $44,000. I would entertain a motion to refer to budget and finance in Finance Committee.
So, move the second.
We have a motion, a second, all those, any discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. The next item, E, Order O, FY24-031, acceptance of grant, Fire Department, Department of Fire Services, in the amount of $18,000. I would entertain a motion to refer to budget and finance in Finance Committee.
So, move the second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we entertain a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. The next item is Order O, FY24-032, acceptance of grant, Council on Aging, Massachusetts Home and Community-Based Service, HCBS, in the amount of $199,000. I would entertain a motion to refer to budget and finance in Finance Committee.
So, move the second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. The next item, Order O, FY24-033, Town Council Acceptance of Proposed License Permit and Fee Increases, Effective July 1, 2024. I would actually defer to the town manager for just a quick introduction of this one.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this piece of legislation establishes and allows the council to vote, or as the council's required to vote, on fees on an annual basis. I don't believe it's ever been done in my tenure. We recognized that it needed to be done, and so, all of the departments have, have outlined their current fees for whatever the permit or license there is, and then proposed a revision to the fees that have been gone over by the Finance Department, and so, those are here for your, your acceptance.
Great. And for the public that's watching, the fee increases are available, if people are interested. if people are interested in, uh, underst- yeah. Yeah, you just need a magnifying glass. All right. Yep.
Are we gonna also include CED on this?
Um...
I'm asking. I-
Uh, I don't, I don't, right now I have budget and finance and finance as a referral ask.
I would recommend to include CED on this as well, to get their, their take on it.
Perfect. I would-
It does, it does have econ- it could have economic development consequences.
Yep. That's a great point. I would entertain a motion to refer to budget and finance and finance and CED committees.
So move to second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. The next item, H, uh, I'm actually gonna, uh, pull from discussion. Uh, there is an error in the legislation, so we're gonna pull it, and we'll bring that back at a future date. Um, uh, moving on to Item I, Order O, FY 24, 035, Adoption of a Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Uh, would actually defer to the town manager for just a very brief overview of what that is.
Thank you, Mr. President. The five-year capital improvement plan is something that, uh, is, uh, in front of you for approval, uh, each year, and, uh, it is our attempt to look forward for the, the next five years, uh, and establish, um, or at least reveal some of the major capital projects that, uh, either we anticipate, uh, or are required, um, to be done. And, uh, so that is what's in front of you now. Um, there's transmittal letter, uh, there's, uh, nice handy frequently asked questions, so that people may not understand the process, uh, or may not understand the difference between a capital plan and, and our budget, our operating budget. It explains all of that. Excuse me. And then it goes through the detailed plan department by department, uh, so that you can see what our departments are proposing. Um, this does not mean, so the capital plan does not mean that these things are funded, and it doesn't mean that you have voted to do them. It's simply an acknowledgement that, that here are what we anticipate our capital expenses being, uh, over the next five years. Uh, generally, we ask departments to look 10 years out. Obviously, the five-year plan is what, what you see on paper, um, but we do ask the departments to take a 10-year look, just to, uh, just so we have a, as full a picture as possible, uh, of, of some of the expenses that, that the town faces over the, over the course of the next, uh, five years, and then, and for internal purposes, keeping tabs on what we think, uh, five to 10 years will look like. Um, it also identifies where we think the funding sources will be. This doesn't mean that these will actually be the funding sources, um, but this is what, uh, finance department and the departments have, have sort of identified as, as potentially, uh, uh, possible funding sources. And those include, um, the catch-all alternative funding sources, which, uh, is, is sort of, uh, is a catch-all, could, it could include grants, uh, and so forth. Um, it identifies Chapter 90 funding. It identifies community preservation, uh, potential funding, uh, math school building authority potential funding, and, and other available funds. It also includes our capital stabilization fund. And as you know, um, we, when we get our free cash certified at the end of our, um, at the end of the, of the year, uh, the council by policy divides the free cash and, and then funds, uh, to a great extent, funds the capital stabilization, uh, account. And you can see, uh, why it's important to fund this capital stabilization account, because a lot of what we're able to do comes from that account. Um, and specifically, uh, from that account, I think probably the biggest single expenditure is probably to maintain our, our school buildings, um, as well as our town buildings and, and so forth. Um, so, uh, so that's essentially what's in front of you. Uh, as I say, you're not, uh, this is not, uh, a vote to commit funding. This is not a vote, um, to appropriate. This is simply, when you get to a vote, this is just simply a vote to accept this as the capital plan, which can change, well, I shouldn't say can. It will change next year, uh, based on reprioritized, um, uh, projects.
Yep. Uh, thank you very much. And for anyone watching, uh, if you are interested in knowing sort of where the capital goes, and in what year we're thinking or considering doing different projects, uh, you will see sort of a by-year over the next couple of years, uh, proposal for spending. And you'll see things like upgrading the HVAC at the middle school, for example, is on there. So, um, for those that follow these things or interested in running, uh, it's a good document to be aware of. Um, I would entertain a motion to refer to budget and finance and finance committee.
So move to second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. All right. Uh, the next three are recurring actions, so, um, unless anyone calls it out, I think we can just act on them. Order O, FY 24, 036, uh, Town Department Capital Transfer Order. I would entertain a motion to refer to, uh, budget and finance and finance committee.
So move to second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. The next one is Order O, FY 24, 037, Transfer Order Bridgewater-Rainham School District Capital Assessment. Uh, would entertain a motion to refer to budget and finance and finance committee.
So move to second.
We have a motion to second. Uh, any discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Next one, Order O, FY 24, 038, Capital Transfer Order Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. I would entertain a motion to refer to budget and finance and finance committee.
So move to second.
A motion to second. All those, uh, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Um, the next one's a little different. Uh, this is M, Resolution R, FY 24, 005, Route 18 corridor transportation planning study. I'd actually defer to the town manager for just a quick introduction of this.
Um, all right. Thank you, Mr. President. Since, uh, Counsel Perry can't talk, um, I'll fill in.
Thank you.
Um, the, uh, this resolution is actually, uh, generated out of the downtown committee, uh, work, and it, uh, encourages the, uh, council, uh, well, this piece of legislation is a resolution which would, if passed by the council, would allow us to move forward with preliminary engineering, um, and potential, uh, grant funding for preliminary engineering on, uh, on, uh, a little bit of reconfiguration of the traffic pattern, uh, downtown. Uh, it proposes to, uh, continue the general traffic pattern, um, but, uh, but, uh, does recognize that it needs, uh, a fair number tweaks. So, um, uh, buy-in by the council would, uh, as I say, allow us to proceed with some very preliminary engineering, uh, in order to get, um, to get, uh, the project, the overall project moving.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to add, Counsel?
Just to, um, make a motion to keep it at a council level.
Okay. The motion is to retain this at the town council level?
Second.
We have a question. We have a motion to second and, uh, discussion?
Yep. So a question through you to the town manager. Um, if, if adopted, um, how much will the, how much will it cost, and where are the funds gonna come from?
I'm sorry, I was gonna sneeze.
I stumped him.
Uh, the, um, uh, the town, the, what we're looking for is, uh, money from, uh, through, either through our tip, um, or through our one-time, uh, stabilization fund, just to do the preliminary engineering, which I, we don't anticipate being, uh, terribly costly.
And then will this also be in consortium with the study that we had with downtown revitalization? Spent a lot of money on that. We haven't moved on most of it, if not all of it. So is, will this supplement it, or are we going in a direction where now we're looking at down the road, another downtown revitalization study?
No. Nope. This is the next step in that study.
Okay. Thank you.
The best way to put it.
Any additional discussion or questions? Okay. I would just comment, you know, I mentioned earlier that we're trying to put a big puzzle together. This is a piece of that puzzle. Um, and so I encourage people to, uh, stay engaged with, uh, with some of these changes that are being proposed. Um, so we have a motion to retain a council. We have a second. Uh, we've had discussion. Any additional comments? None. Uh, all those in favor of keeping this at the town council say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Uh, that concludes, uh, Item N. Uh, the next item we have is O, Citizen Comments. Um, just to read the same, uh, thing I mentioned before. Uh, due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. I would remind you, if you, uh, do have comments to make, uh, ask you to please limit your remarks to three minutes. Would anyone from the public care to speak?
Hi, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. Um, co- a comment on the vet, um, for the veterans. If they're dividing between the two towns, that would mean that, um, this building would be not open all week. That building in Rainham would not be open all week, so how does that affect the veterans? You know, they'll have to know, oh, I can't go today, 'cause it's Monday, or I can't go Wednesday. So that makes it a little difficult, so that's just something to keep in mind. It's, you know, it's easy when you know something's gonna be open. And, um, you know, uh, and how would that serve the veterans, you know, adequately by not having something open? I also don't feel I received answers tonight as far as, um, why we can't speak all of a sudden at committees, like the Concom was one of them. I still don't feel like I got any answers why that has changed. That has never been that way, and then in the past few months, it has. And I won't go into specifics as to who I think might be one of the reasons, but it's just, doesn't make sense that you can't comment on something that's on the agenda, unless it's a closed thing, it's not to the public. But, um, I still don't feel like I got an answer for that, and I would appreciate an answer. Um, and as far as the zoning thing, um, it was mentioned about getting foot traffic. You want the people in the apartments for foot traffic. It makes it sound like those are the only people that are gonna be shopping down there, but we don't have parking, so it makes it hard. But it's supposed to make the, um, businesses successful, that they'll wanna, um, spruce up their buildings. You gotta remember that most of the people, especially in the center of town, they don't own those buildings. Those, they rent them, and the landlord has to be the one to have that incentive. And there's no incentive for these landlords other than to increase the rent for these peoples, and they can't afford the rent, so they leave. So there's gotta be something to encourage these landlords to fix up the building, but also to try to keep these businesses there, 'cause they just can't afford the rent that's being charged. Um, I still don't feel that there should even a five-story. Putting a tall building behind a short building doesn't hide the tall building. So, um, I'm, I'm just, don't understand that, but I don't think I'm gonna get anywhere on that one. Um, and I still didn't hear where the train station is supposed to be. Um, I still don't understand that, 'cause I'm looking at the map, and that's Burger King. So, um, I didn't hear clarification as to specifically where they were putting it, but I did like to hear that we don't necessarily have to move it. Um, so, um, and the seeking the variances, um, that was in that packet. Um, and it sounds like only one person is able to determine if something can be ver- you know, variance. There should be more than one person involved. It can't be just one person that say, okay, yeah, we'll, we'll allow that. And I'm also still concerned about that checklist. If everybody does all the things on the checklist, it sounds like that we don't have a, uh, thing to stand on to not allow something. So I just still wanna know what recourse we have to be able to not necessarily allow something. Just because you do the checklist, there should be something to help, um, you know, stop something. And do residents have any say at all as to what comes in? Um, and, uh, that's, there's, there's so much more. I can't think, but, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Regarding the veteran agent, I, I know you have referred it to the budget committee, but does anyone know offhand what would be the difference in salary between the part-time and the second full-time? Does anyone have that number?
We do not. I, just to clarify, that, that one was not referred to budget. Uh, we got an update from the town manager, uh, on his hiring process. The-
Mr. President?
Sorry. Yeah, apologize. Yep. Sorry.
And then I have a second comment, which is, um, the council has no authority. The town manager decides it all. Am I correct that the council signs the contract for the town manager? Is that correct?
We will follow up at the next meeting with an answer for that.
Okay. Okay. Well, I just wanted to know in terms of the council and the town manager, where we stand. And I guess I will review the, not the bylaws, the charter-
Charter.
-as well. But I do think that that is an issue that needs to be done for the citizens of Bridgewater to protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to speak? Thanks.
Just a quick comment. Jim Candido, Stetson Street, Bridgewater, uh, relating to the train station, as she just mentioned. Uh, I don't know who came up with that idea to put it down near Burger King. Burger King's train station worked wonderful back in the 30s and 40s, I believe. Uh, but putting it there today, it's absolutely ridiculous. I don't know if any of you know, but the Selectments Committees years ago talked about moving the train station southeast, further on down. And, uh, that made sense. But moving it closer, I'd like to know what the traffic study has been. Do you have a traffic study on what it's gonna cause by having that train station there? And is the train, when it slows there, is it gonna be blocking Broad Street and Pleasant Street as well? You know, it's really gonna back up traffic, because they can't do 50 miles an hour coming in, and they can't do 50 miles an hour crossing Pleasant Street. So, you know, how is that gonna be handled? I don't know. I guess you don't know either, but it'd be nice to get a traffic study.
We, uh, will follow up in the next, in the next meeting with a clarification on, uh, the train station proposal.
And, um, you know, it's just gonna be more traffic, more noise, more congestion. And just for the town manager, if I may, uh, people were mentioning roads on Stetson Street when it was closed down three days during that hurricane, and the tree came down, and the transformer caught on fire. The, the fire burnt right through this brand-new pavement. So there's a big hole still in the street that should be, uh, paved over. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carlton Hunt, Austin Street, very quickly. Thank you for your consideration on the, uh, in the hearing and the, uh, Form-based code. One question to the town manager. I'd like to see a written policy submitted with respect to town employees taking over committee, board, and commission meetings, and also muting participants. I think that's an egregious open meeting violation, and I'd like to see a written policy so the employees of the town know that they are not to do that. Secondly, to the town manager, you mentioned the CPC potential capital. Are you intending to discuss that with the CPC in the near future? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else care to speak? Please.
Good evening. Kevin Marshall, Auburn Street. Um, I just wanna say thank you through y'all to Mr. Dutton for clarifying the staffing requirements and what's gonna be happening with the veterans, uh, with the veteran district. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have any other, uh, comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none. Uh, I will close out Item O, Citizen Comments. We'll move on to Item P, Council Comments, starting with, uh, Counsel Gallagher.
Well, I don't have much of a voice tonight either.
Oh, jeez. I'm gonna be sick after this.
Oh, no.
Here and there.
Jeez.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Gallagher. Uh, Counsel Robinson?
Uh, thank you. Um, I, first I wanna, um, acknowledge around the, uh, the Form-Based Code ordinance. I'm really glad that you made the comments that you did, and I wanna echo and support that, that I, and I can only speak for myself, but I think the intent here is genuinely about us being able to provide guidance to anyone that we partner with around any future development, to ensure that what is built is something that we're excited and proud of. Um, so I do thank everyone who's been involved and for the, the time put into it, and I'm sorry that Mr. Rulli doesn't benefit from hearing that part, um, but, uh, I know a lot of work has gone into the vision to reality, and I'm still a huge believer of that, and I really want to see this go forward. Um, thank you too, also to those of you who continue to make it through these meetings with us, um, but more importantly, the fact that you're so tuned in. Um, and I know that there are others that do watch these meetings, that we have heard from directly through emails, through phone calls, et cetera. I've been really, really impressed, um, even though I think it's been a, maybe a little scary, a little frustrating for folks, you know, this is stuff that people, everyday people aren't familiar with. But I've been really impressed to hear from so many folks really digging in- digging in and trying to learn and trying to understand. So I think our commitment as a council is that we really, really need to make sure that we are really clear on what's being communicated, and at what points, and what we can expect, what the committees can expect, and certainly what our public can expect as well, so that we're all going through this process together. So I will definitely stress and ask, you know, with respect to Mr. Dutton and Mr. Roy, to continue to work very closely with us as cosponsors, and make sure we're really buttoned up. And then, y'all ignored me, and then Mr. Rollins had to, you know, reemphasize, I am so glad there's passion for our veterans in town, but again, I want to encourage us to use our time around the matters that we can affect the most. I think we've talked about the veterans' agent a lot, and I know that there's still some outstanding questions, and we're entitled to ask them, but at the same time, I continue to encourage us to really try and focus on areas that we, we can actually impact and affect around policy and legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson. Counselor George?
Thank you, Mr. President, just a couple of things. One is, I would really, and I forget if a councilor said that, maybe Mr. Dutton did, the proposed five-year capital improvement plan program, if you really want to see the towns future down the road fiscally in regards to what we're going to look at for capital improvements, and where the money's going to come from proposed, I think it's about a 24-page document. Everyone in this room, everyone watching, should take the time to go through it and understand it, with the understanding, as Mr. Dutton brought up, that, you know, it's kind of a flowing document, but if you look 2026, 2027, 2028, you're going to see some very big numbers, both from proposed spends, as well as where those funds are going to come from. And it would behoove everyone, be it on the council, be it Finance and Budget, Finance Committee, residents, to really take a hold of that and start looking at it from the perspective of, do you agree with it? Do you not agree with it? If you don't agree with it, maybe it's something that needs to be discussed, but I think Mr. Dutton and the entire finance team does a phenomenal job putting that together. I'd hate to see it sit on a shelf and, you know, it only comes up once a year, but, yeah, I mean, we go through a lot of documents, we go through a lot of studies and reports and things of that nature, but really, if there's one thing that is consistent, that capital improvement plan, I think, is something that we, everyone should take the opportunity to read, understand, and ask questions. I, I passed out, I had this passed around in regards to the MBTA overlay requirement. I'm going to go on the record to say that I am not against the downtown revitalization, I'm not against the Form-Based Code. I did ask specific questions on the MBTA section, because I don't want to push the envelope and get sued, but I also don't want things being circulated that makes it sound like we have to get this done in a very short period of time. I understand that Mr. Roy said there are certain things that, that we may not be able to apply for, and things of that nature, but in regards to the MBTA station, you know, not having to move, but if by chance it has to move, at the end of the day, would love to see other people to pay for it, but if, whatever isn't paid for by other sources would have to be paid for by us. I am a firm believer that the train station should move. If we go back to the days of when the train, the whole commuter rail was proposed, the original proposal was for the station to be at Spring Street, and as we had a former elected town employee get up in front of us and say, boy, did he long for the days of getting a few people behind closed doors and getting things done. That train station where it is today is a direct result of that. It was not done in an open and transparent manner. There were a few people that were in that room, brought it through, and got it done without even understanding that there was alternatives to it, there were things to consider. I think what we've gone through today, what we're going to go through over the next couple of weeks, if not months, is diametrically better than it, than it was in the past. I understand that there are concerns about it, but I don't think anyone, unless I'm missing something, is going to stand up and say, we weren't informed, we didn't know what was going on, there was some confusion, and I get that, but at the end of the day, a decision is going to be made for the, for the benefit of Bridgewater. I don't know, well, I can almost guarantee that it's not going to satisfy everybody, but I am fully confident in all parties involved, that we're just trying to do the best for Bridgewater. The other thing too, that was brought up, and I'd like to reiterate, is just because we passed the code, doesn't mean that private developers are going to come and build all of these things that people are afraid of. They're not going to come now, because they don't have the ability to do it, but whatever is proposed or envisioned, five, 10, 15 years down the road, may be exactly what was envisioned, it could be dramatically different, but we've got to lay down the groundwork to allow outside people, be it residential, be it commercial, the mix of both, to come in and propose some things that, you know, obviously are going to benefit them, but also benefit the town as well. We are at a crossroads of where we want to be in the next 15 to 20 years, and I think getting through this code is going to get us there as well. And that's about it. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Counselor George. Dr. Perry?
I'm going to pass this evening, thank you very much.
Counselor Murphy?
No comments from me either, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKinnon?
Just one comment, I got a few more Ts to cross and Is to dot, but April 28th, 8 to 12, should be the town cleanup, right in this parking lot, maybe some donuts, some coffee, and it should be a good time, it's always a good event, so April 28th, hopefully, as long as everything wraps up properly.
Awesome.
That's it for me, thank you.
Great, thank you for picking that up. Great. Counselor Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President, just wanted to say briefly that we received a lot of thoughtful input tonight, certainly from the public and from council members as well. I think that we've arrived at a somewhat more of a common understanding with respect to Form-Based Code and the zoning changes that are contemplated before us, that we're now going to continue to study for our next session. I think overall, it was a promising development, and I'm, I'm very happy for the input that we received, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Chase. Counselor Lindy?
Thank you. I cherish public comment, I want to make sure that it thrives and continues, and nobody has the ability to shut it off, other than the limitation of time, so everybody can get their words in. I especially appreciate the veterans' input. The folks that elected us, the people that voted for us, or our constituents, I want to listen to them and make sure their voices are heard. As far as the, I'm overjoyed to hear that we might have a VSO in April, I hope that means we might be able to have some kind of a Memorial Day celebration this year. I know it sounds like it's quick, because it's the end of May, but the fact that we don't is sad, in my opinion, and I think we had great discussions, even though we had differences and different votes, in the end, I don't like to see a process too quick, okay? I'm kind of, I'm a middle child, middle of the road, like to see everybody get along, but I also like to see it fully vetted, and, you know, to see something that wasn't in a document that has a major impact on it, I think we can get it right, so thank you.
Thank you. So I will round us out. I think, building on what others have said, I'm excited to see the Form-Based Code get to this point. Truthfully, I'm, I'm not surprised that we kind of maybe had a vision here, or a few version issues. I think when you have something this big, and we're intentionally trying to make sure a lot of people look at it and react to it and put in contributions to it, that means you're coordinating input from a lot of different places. So I think we did the right thing to say, hey, let's just kind of pause and make sure we have everyone's input landing in the same document, but I don't want people to misinterpret that as lack of alignment, it's just, there are a ton of stakeholders that matter in this, and we want to make sure that all those voices get into a common document, so that's important. I do want to maybe just address one other thing that I've heard, someone actually sent me a long email about it, and they were sort of like under the, the incorrect assumption that this whole Form-Based Code was being built by people outside of Bridgewater. They said, you know, why would we ever let, you know, someone from another town tell us what our town's going to do? So I just want to maybe put myself out there, I am a cosponsor of this, I grew up in this town, I live here with my family, I volunteer in the town, my fingerprints are all over this thing. This has been created by people in Bridgewater, the decisions are going to be made by people who live in Bridgewater, in your neighborhoods and represent you. Your input from people that live in Bridgewater is part of it. I just really want to make sure that there isn't any sort of just misunderstanding with that. This is a Bridgewater thing, I will put myself out there as accountable, right, along with everyone on this, on this, on the town council. Bridgewater is making this decision, and it's based on the input that we've had and what we think is best for the town. So I just want to make sure there isn't confusion there. Outside of that, I also want to thank everyone who stayed through a long meeting. The feedback is important, it's appreciated, and, and, and we'll, we'll kind of figure out the public comment thing to make sure that everyone's voices are, are heard. I think that's it. With that, we can end council comments. We do not have executive session tonight, so I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Recording stopped.